Welcome to the Southwick Town Meeting. We're starting with the special town meeting. I'm going to ask that Michelle read the warrant.
Special Town Meeting, Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, at the Southwick Regional School, at 493 Feeding Hills Road, in the parking lot, to either of the constables of the Town of Southwick and the County of Hamden. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warrant the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and the town affairs to meet and assemble at the Southwick Regional School parking lot on Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, then and there for the special town meeting, and to act on the following articles.
Madam Moderator, I make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the warrant in its entirety and act on each article separately.
Can we have a second? All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. We'll start with the first article, Article One, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from available funds, General Salary Reserve, EMS, Water Sewer Salary Reserve, the sum of $135,274,000, to the following salary accounts. And this is requested by the Select Board, Sewer Commission, the Board of Health, and the Water Commission. And this requires a majority vote. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Article, Article One. The Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $110,064 from the General Fund Salary Reserve, and the sum of $15,000 from the EMS Salary Reserve, and the sum of $2,710 from the Sewer Salary Reserve, and $7,500 from the Water Salary Reserve, for a total of $135,274 for salary accounts as read by the moderator.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The article passes. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from available funds, free cash, the sum of $222,000, for the following operational items, or take any other action relative thereto. Snow and ice removal, $210,000; tropical storm ISIS cleanup, $62,000. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee? This is recommended by the DPW in the Select Board.
Article Two, Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $272,000 from free cash for the purpose of snow and ice removal expenses, and tropical storm Isaiah's cleanup, as read by the moderator.
Is there any discussion? Seeing there is none, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The article passes. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from available funds, free cash, the sum of $32,000 to other post-employment benefit trust fund established under the provisions of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 20, and take any other action relative thereto. And this is requested by the town accountant. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Article Three, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $30,000 from free cash for the purpose of the other post-employment benefits trust fund, as read by the moderator.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. The article passes. Article Four, to see if the town will appropriate and transfer from the Canal Brook Dam and log removal operational items, number 01299-542413, to the sum of $5,000, to the Canal Brook Dam and log removal capital line item, number 01299-588027, for the purposes of carrying the funds forward into the next year as a capital expense, or take any other action relative thereto. This is requested by the Lake Management Committee and the Select Board. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Article Four, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Canal Brook Dam and log removal operations line item, number 01299-542413, the sum of $5,000, to Canal Brook Dam and log removal capital line item, number 01299-588027, as read by the moderator.
Is there any discussion? Seeing there is none, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The article passes. That's the conclusion of the special town meeting. We're going to move to the annual town meeting, and we're going to ask Chief Bishop to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm sorry.
Will you all stand, please?
I'm sorry.
Stand down. Sit down.
I forgot, we need to adjourn the special town meeting. Do I have a second? The town, the special town meeting is adjourned. Okay, chief, we're ready for you.
Now if you would stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
So, welcome to the 2021 Annual Town Meeting. My name's Celeste Saint Jacques, and I live at 22 Deer Run. This is my first time, so I hope you can be a little forgiving for any mistakes I might make. First, I want to admit non-voting members to the floor. Michelle Hill, Town Collector Clerk, Benjamin Coyle, Town Council, Lieutenant Robert Landis, Southwick Police Department, Deputy Rich Fustanowicz, Southwick Fire Department, Kyle Scott, Building Cement Inspector, Tammy Spencer, Board of Health, Lynn Blair, Library Director, Alan Slesler, Town Planner, Den Willard, Superintendent of Schools, Steve Presnell, Business Manager, Southwick Town Granville Regional School District, Mark Robinsky, Mass D O E R, and Scott Lament, Tynick Landscape. I'd like to take a moment to honor some individuals who have passed away in the last year, who gave gates service to the town. Roy Benson, Council on Aging Board, Joan Plancon, Council of Aging Board, Nancy Bailey, Council of Aging Board, Constance Johnson, Pole Worker, Newt Thompson, Jr., Volunteer, Newt Lyons, Volunteer, Arlene G. Oshonegi, Twinning Volunteer, Richard Mayhew Volunteer, Fran Zaninski Volunteer, Jer Argino, COA, and Senior Center Staff Member, Kenneth I., Board of Appeals Member, Suzanne Davis, Library Trustee, Luther Hosmer, Water Commissioner and Fire Department, and Diane Fox, Treasurer Collector's Clerk's Office. And I'd like to take a moment to honor all U.S. servicewomen and men. I also want to make some introductions. The Select Board members, Doug Fox, Chairperson, Joseph Dede, and Russell Fox, who couldn't be with here tonight. We have Michelle Hill, Town Clerk, Carl Steinhardt, Town Manager, Ben Coyle, Town Council. We also have Laura Fletcher, our Town Accountant, and Melissa Bridges, our Assistant Town Accountant. I'd like to introduce the members of the Finance Committee who've done a lot of work getting this budget prepared. Linda Baffal is the Chairperson, and she couldn't be here this evening, but Art Pennell is the Vice Chairperson. We also have Sheila Chamberlain, Karen DeMayo with us, and also Terry Mish, Bob Horacek, and Kerry Doherty. Let me start with a couple of basic rules of the annual town meeting. Any questions on the meeting procedure can be addressed as a point of order. When called to speak, please say your name and address. Our pages, Annette Saint Jacques and Grace Kuhn, will bring you the microphone. Please limit your comments to about two minutes. Speak one at a time, and only call on when interpreted. And let's try to keep the questions based on the article that we're addressing. And please silence your cellphones, and if you need to use your cellphone, please step out. Now, we're ready to start, and Michelle Hill will read the warrant.
Annual Town Election, Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, at 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, at the Southwick Town Hall, 454 College Highway Precincts 1, 2, and 3. Annual Town Meeting, Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, at 6:15, at the Southwick Regional School, 93 Feeding Hills Road, in the parking lot, to either of the constables of the Town of Southwick and the County of Hamden. Greetings.
Madam Moderator. I, Doug Moglen, make a motion, we dispense with the reading of the warrant in its entirety and act on each article separately.
May I have a second? All in favor say aye. All opposed say no.
Given under our hands, as said, Southwick, this 30th day of April, the year of the Lord, 2021, signed by the Select Board, Doug Moglen, Chairman, Joseph J. Dede, Vice Chairman, Russell S. Fox, Clerk. Pursuant to the win warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Southwick by posting up attested copies of said same at three places, and said seven days before this date thereof, as within directed.
I just need to make a motion to allow the people on the town floor who are not residents of the town. Can I have a motion? Can I, all in favor say aye. We will start with the articles. Article One has already been enacted upon, as the town elections were held last week. I'm going to start with Article Two. Articles Two, Three, Four, and Five are consent agenda, and we're going to vote on all three of the, I'm sorry, four of those together. Article Two, Town Reports, and that's requested by the Select Board. Article Three is the employment of minor officers. Article Four is to sell or trade obsolete equipment. And Article Five is to apply and accept grants. These are all requested by the Select Board. May I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee? Do you need a recommendation? You don't need a recommendation? I'm sorry. Do we have any discussion on those articles? Seeing there is none, all in favor of the passing of these articles, please say aye. All opposed, nay. Seeing there is none, the articles pass. Now, we'll move to Article Six, Road Reconstruction Borrowing Authorization, to see if the town will appropriate $1 million or any other amount to pay costs of roadway construction, including costs of paving, resurfacing, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether this amount shall be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds, borrowing or otherwise, or take any other action relative thereto. This is required by the Select Board and requires a two-third majority. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Article Six, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote that the sum of $1 million is appropriated to pay costs of roadway reconstruction, including costs of paving, resurfacing, and the paving, payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MGL, Section 44, Paragraph 7.1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, or pursuant to any other vote of the town heretofore adopted, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote, in accordance with MGL, Section 44, Paragraph 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The article passes. Article Seven, Dump Truck Borrowing Authorization, to see if the town will appropriate $260,000 or any other amount to pay costs of purchasing and equipment, a dump truck for the use of the Public Works Department, including the payment of all other costs incidental and relative thereto, to determine whether this amount shall be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds, borrowing or otherwise, or take any other relative action thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee? This is requested by the Select Board.
Article Seven, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote that the sum of $260,000 is appropriated to pay costs of purchasing and equipping a dump truck for the use of the Department of Public Works, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Section 44, Paragraph 7.1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, or pursuant to any other vote of the town heretofore adopted, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote, in accordance with MGL, Section 44, Paragraph 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. The total amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote shall be reduced to the extent of any grants received by the town on account of this project.
Do we have any discussion or questions? Seeing there is none, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The article passes. Article Eight, Ambulance Borrowing Authorization, see if the town will appropriate $325,000 or any other amount to pay costs of purchasing and equipment and ambulance, including the payment of all other costs incidental or relative thereto, to determine whether this amount shall be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds, borrowing or otherwise, or take any other action relative thereto. This is requested by the Select Board. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Article Eight, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote that the sum of $325,000 is appropriated to pay costs of purchasing and equipping an ambulance, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Section 44, Paragraph 7.1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, or pursuant to any other vote of the town heretofore adopted, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote, in accordance with Mass General Law, Section 44, Paragraph 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. The total amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote shall be reduced to the extent of any grants received by the town on account of this project.
Do we have any discussion or questions?
Bill List, AD Clause, Anderson Road. Just a question, is this an addition to the two amulets we have in town, or is this replacing one? Okay, will we sell the old one? Okay, so that'll be applied to the bond proceeds? Okay, okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing there is none, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The article passes. We'll move to Article Nine, Water Transmission Main Improvements, to see if the town will appropriate $575,000 or any other amount to pay the cost of waterline replacement, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether this amount shall be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds, borrowing or otherwise, or take any other action relative thereto. This is requested by the Water Commission. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Article Nine, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote that the sum of $575,000 is appropriated to pay costs of waterline replacement, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Section 44, Paragraph 8.5, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, or pursuant to any other vote of the town heretofore adopted, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote, in accordance with Mass General Law, Section 44, Paragraph 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. The total amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote shall be reduced to the extent of any grants received by the town on account of this project.
Do we have any discussion or questions?
Marcus Phelps, 28 Depot Street. I have two questions. First, where will this work be done? And the second question is, will this work help to take away the water moratorium that is currently in effect?
Randy Brown, 95, Fred Jackson, DPW Director. So, in response to Marcus' question, the project will be located actually in Westfield. So, our connection with Brickfield Water and Sewer is in Westfield, on the Southwick Road, which, you know, shares this as a college highway, and then it'll, it'll end at the Southwick Town Line. So, near, near where the Jerry Drive, new pump station is that was constructed last year. And yes, once this project is in place, we will be able to draw more water into our water system, which will help lift the moratorium that you referred to.
Are there any other questions? Seeing there is none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The article passes. We're going to move to Article 10, which is the annual town budget. We're going to go through every line item, well, through every department, and vote on each individual department in the town report that you received. Let me read the article to start with. To see if the town will vote to fix the compensation of elected officers in town employee's salary, where stipulated, provided for a reserve fund, provide a sum of money for capital outlay in following town departments, cable, channel 15, computer, police, fire, lake management, accounting office, planning board, library, cemetery commission, parks and rec commission, town hall, public safety buildings, Department of Public Works, the various divisions, and determine the sum of money the town will raise and appropriate, including appropriation from available funds and defray costs and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, for ensuing fiscal year, July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022, or take any other action relative thereto. All of these require a majority vote. We're going to start with general government. Should be one second to get my papers organized. General Government is going to begin on page one. What the general funds includes is salaries of the moderator, selectmen, chief administrator, the reserve fund, Finance Committee salaries, the operations, accounting salaries, accounting operations, accessor salaries, accessor operations, accessor capital, town clerk salaries and operations, the capital, legal ads, legal operations, labor negotiations. It also includes planning board conservation, election registration capital, election registration operations. It moves on to planning board operations, planning board capitals, Board of Appeals salaries, and operations, ecotomic development, computer salaries, computer operations, computer capital, town hall salaries and operations, and town hall capital. The total for general government is $2,565,256. Do we have any discussion on general government? We'll move to a vote. All in favor of general government say aye. All opposed say nay. Next, we're going to move on to police, fire, and public safety. This includes police officer salaries, police operations, police capital, dispatcher salaries, dispatcher operations, constable salaries, fire chief salaries, fire operations, fire capital, public safety buildings and operations, public safety buildings capital, building inspector salaries and operations, building inspector capital, emergency management salaries, emergency management operations, and emergency management capital. Now, we're on top of page 11. It moves on to animal control salaries and operations and capital, lake management salary and operations and lake management capital. And on the top of page 12, the last is lake restoration operations. Bring the total in public safety to $3,365,700. seventy-two dollars. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed say no. The next one we move on to is Department of Public Works. Department of Public Works includes highway division salaries, highway division operations and capital, winter road salaries, winter road operations, street lighting, road machinery operations, road machinery capital, engineering division salary, engineering division operations, channel ninety division, solid waste salaries and operations, and solid waste capital. Bringing the total for the Department of Public Works, two million, one hundred and three, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. The next item is a little bit shorter, it's just the sewer implementation salary, and that includes sewer implementation salary and operations, and that's seven hundred dollars. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed say no. Human services. This includes cemetery salaries, cemetery operations, cemetery capital, Board of Health salary, operations, council on aging salaries, council on aging operations, and veterans. Bringing the total in human services to four hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Are there any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. The next item on the budget is culture and recreation. This includes library salaries, library operations, library capital, parks and rec salary and operations and capital, agricultural committee operations, cultural council operations, historical operations, channel fifteen salaries, channel fifteen operations, and channel fifteen capital. Bringing the total culture and recreation to six hundred and fifty-seven thousand and thirty-four dollars. Is there any discussion?
Patrick, I live at eleven Patriots Way, I have two questions. The first is, what is rails-to-trail salary? What does that involve? And the second is beach salaries. Are they planning on opening the town beach this summer?
Mr. Mowgli, would you like to take that?
I was going to ask if the Chair of Park and Rec is here, or anyone from Park and Rec that would like to address that. As far as I know, they did plan to open the beach from the discussions that they were having in their meetings, and, and the hiring of, of staff for that function, subject to the Governor's order.
Okay, so what's rails-to-trail salary? Fifty-seven hundred dollars, what is it?
That's probably maintenance and mowing of the, the grounds around the trail.
Are there any other discussion or questions? Seeing there's none, all in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. Next, we will move on to debt and interest and insurance. This includes principal payments, and you can see the following listed below, interest and employee benefits, and casualty insurance. The grand total of this is two million, four hundred and eighteen, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Do we have any questions? This brings the grand total of general government to eleven million, five hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Now we're going to move on to water. I'm sorry. All in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. At the start of water, starting on page twenty, we have elected salaries, operations, capital, debt, insurance, and the salary reserved, and the final being employee benefits. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. Now we move into sewer. The salaries for sewer, operations, capital, salaries reserved, principal and interest. The grand total for the sewer division is one million, five hundred, fourteen, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. Next, we move into EMS. This includes EMS salaries, operation, EMS capital, and the salary reserved. The EMS budget, one million, forty-five thousand and ninety dollars. That's the total for EMS. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. Now we will approve and ask for the recommendation of the Finance Committee on the tonal budget.
Article ten, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirteen million, one hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and appropriate and transfer from free cash, one million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and appropriate and transfer from the cable TV PEG account, the sum of sixty-seven thousand dollars, and appropriate and transfer from the sale of lots, six thousand, eight hundred dollars, and appropriate and transfer from overlay surplus, the sum of seventy thousand dollars, and appropriate and transfer from the sewer capital account, the sum of twenty-three thousand dollars, and, and transfer from the sewer capital account, the sum of twenty-three thousand dollars, and appropriate and transfer from sewer retained earnings, the sum of three hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, and appropriate and transfer from water retained earnings, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars, for the grand total of fifteen million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars, which represents the general fund budget, in the amount of eleven million, five hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and the water fund budget of one million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars, and the sewer budget of one million, five hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and the emergency medical services budget, one million, forty-five thousand, ninety dollars, as read by the moderator.
Are there any other questions on the annual budget? Seeing there are none, all in favor say aye, all in favor say nay. The annual budget passes.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to call two people up to the front for a little bit of recognition. Would Chief Bishop and Lieutenant Landis please come to the center? Russell Fox is probably swearing right now that I somehow was introduced to his family today. If he wasn't sick at home before, he isn't now. So back when the Ice Age finally cleared and the Congammon Lakes were formed, Kevin Bishop moved to the town of Southwick. And approximately thirty-four years ago, he became an employee of the town and worked his way studiously through the ranks of our, of our department and became our chief. And the last three years has just been an absolute pleasure to have him as our chief in an unprecedented time in, in the history of our town. I personally got to observe the chief handle situations that I don't think anybody had thought of that we were going to have to handle, from, you know, dealing with people shut in their homes, to, you know, many people being ill, to simple life's pleasures like recognizing kids' birthdays, that five and six-year-olds that couldn't go and have birthday parties with cake with their, with their little friends, and even at the high school with the graduation last year practically being lost, to have a recognition that was able to bring the entire town into a celebration for all of the kids that had worked so hard to get through the school system and graduate. It was just a, just personified Kevin Bishop. And before I go too far, is Mrs. Bishop here? Mrs. Bishop, if I may, because she'll probably see the video, should be eligible for sainthood now. There's no reason to wait for her to, you know, be canonized and everything. But Kevin, for those that don't know, Kevin will be retiring at the end of June, and I just wanted to take a brief moment to, before everybody goes rushing out of here at the end of town meeting, to recognize all of his achievements, all of his dedication and giving to the town, and give him an opportunity, if he'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mowgli. I was not prepared for it, and people know me, know I don't like getting up in front of people. But again, to the citizens of Southwick, it's always been about you. It's been an honor serving you. You've, you've been supportive of me and my family for all of my years in this town, and I can't thank you enough. It's been an honor to serve all of you. I'm going to be doing some traveling, but I will be back. I still think I've got some commitment to this community. I just don't know which area I'm going to put my energy in, once I do get back from a little vacation with Mrs. Bishop, and she truly is a saint. Thank you all, I do appreciate it.
So Kevin, on behalf of the town of Southwick, I'd like to present the certificate of appreciation to recognize and to convey our heartfelt appreciation of your outstanding achievements and dedication to the town of Southwick, while serving as the town of Southwick Chief of Police and many other capacities for almost forty years. Your leadership efforts in running your department and the services provided to all town departments, state and federal agencies, and residents of the town are well acknowledged and noted. Your tireless efforts with the Park and Recreation, Recreation Commission, dare officer programs in the Southwick Schools, and community policing education programs for the citizens demonstrate your service as a role model for many youth and adults in our town. We wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors and travels, and thank you for your service to the town. And that's signed by Doug Mowgli, Select Board Chair, Vice Chairman Joe Diddy, and Russell Fox.
One thing Doug didn't mention, too, is that I'm going to have the honor of leading our drive-by seniors again on June fourth. We're going to start at four o'clock from the high school. We're going to be posting where the route's going to be, but I am going to have the honor to lead those kids one more time out there. And hopefully Doug's going to speak about the gentleman to my right over here. I got some kind words from him, but I'll steal it away. Just want the, the community to know Lieutenant Landis has my full support of becoming next chief of the town of Southwick. I couldn't have asked for a better person to work with for the past three years, for what we had to go through together as a team. And that team involved him and every member of our Southwick Police Department. I can't thank them enough also.
Well, he said it. I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce to those who don't know him, but to put a mask face to the name of incoming police chief, Bobby Landis. That's subject to, but anyway, thank you very much, I appreciate your indulgence.
We'll move on to Article eleven, the Department Revolving Fund Annual Spending Limit Authorization, to see if the town will vote to fix the maximum amount that may be spent during the fiscal year 2022, beginning on July first, 2021, for the revolving funds in Chapter twenty-five of the Code of the Town of Southwick, for certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, or offices, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E, one slash two, or take any other action relative thereto. And this is requested by the Select Board. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Article eleven, Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to authorize Article ten in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the purposes of inspectors' revolving, hazmat revolving, boat ramp revolving, police chief lake revolving, local lake permitting revolving, custodial service fund revolving, council of aging revolving fund, and council of aging classes revolving fund, sidewalk revolving, and council on aging house, house numbering program revolving fund, and local wetland application revolving fund.
Is there any discussion or questions?
Point of order. Madam Moderator, I'd like to point out, there's a typo in that article. The wording should have been, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to authorize Article eleven instead of ten. Noted.
This is Article eleven, Departmental Revolving Fund Annual Spending Limit Authorization. Oh, okay. Do we have any discussion or questions? Seeing there's none, all in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. The article passes. Article twelve is Community Preservation Annual Budget, to act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2022, Community Preservation Budget, to set up a budget reserve for later appropriation of money from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenue, and annual towns' funds for the undertaking of community preservation projects, and all other necessary and proper expense for the year pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four B, for the fiscal year 2022, Community Preservation Fund appropriate to be set aside as follows. The recommendation of the Finance Committee, please?
Article twelve, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to authorize the community preservation reserves in the amount of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars, as read by the moderator.
I should have added, this is requested by the Community Preservation Committee. Is there any questions or discussion? Yes.
It's more of a comment, and it's in regard to the Finance Committee's pros and cons. I'd just like to have it corrected that CPA funds don't come from, don't come from three percent of our taxes. CPA funding comes from a three percent surcharge after the first hundred thousand dollars of our tax, valuation of our properties. So I just wanted to see that corrected moving forward, and anytime that it's put out there by the town, it's a three percent surcharge on our taxes after the first hundred thousand dollar valuation. Okay? Thank you very much.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor of Article twelve, please say aye, all opposed, please say nay. The article passes. Article thirteen, Community Preservation Committee Administration and Operation Expenses, to act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee on the fiscal year 2022, Community Preservation Budget- Preservation Budget, and appropriate 5%, $16,430 of the money of the Community Preservation General Unreserved Fund for the administration and operating expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action relative thereto. And this is recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. Can I have the report from the Finance Committee?
Article 13. Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $16,430 from the Community Preservation General Unreserved Fund for the purpose of administrative and operating expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, as read by the moderator.
Do we have any discussion or comments, please? Seeing there are none, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The article passes. Article 14, Community Preservation Committee Trails Grant. To see if this town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $15,000 from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Fund to the Southwick Conservation Commission in order to rehabilitate and improve trails, procure, and install wayfinding and interpreting signage, and stabilize eroded areas on the North Pond Conservation Area. The maximum amount requested contingent on the approval of a Division of Conservation Resources Trails Grant, but shall not exceed 15,000 total. The North Conser Pond, Observatory, I'm sorry. The North Pond Conservation Area is located at 49 South One Yard Road, Assessors Map 099, Parcel 038. This is requested by the Community Preservation Committee and the Southwick Conservation Committee. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Article 14. Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $15,000 in accordance with the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee.
Are there any discussions or questions on Article 14? Seeing there's none, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Article 14 passes. Article 15, Community Preservation Committee Housing Plan. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $25,000 from the Community Preservation Committee Housing Reserve Fund to the Planning Board for the preparation of a housing plan for the town of Southwick, or take any other, other action relative thereto. This is requested by the Community Preservation Committee and the Planning Board. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Article 15. The Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $25,000 in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee.
Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing there's none, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Article 15 passes. Article 16, Community Preservation Committee Old Library. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $27,600 from the Community Preservation Historical Fund to the B. Charles Real Estate Holding Company towards restoring and rehabilitating 11 stained glass windows at the old town library. The building is located on 475 College Highway, Southwick Assessors Map 089, Parcel 002, recorded at the Handen County Register of Deeds Book 22992, Page 259, or take any other relative action thereto. This is requested by the Community Preservation Committee and the Historical Committee. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Article 16. Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $27,607 in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee.
Do we have any comments or discussion? We'll take Mr. List first.
Bill List, 80 Claus Anderson Road. Frankly, I'm surprised that this article is actually up for a debate and, and vote. You're all familiar with the address. Anybody grow up in town that spent time in that public library as a kid? Awesome building, loved it, still love it. And in fact, I will take credit for stirring the pot, having the town do something with this building about eight years ago. Many discussions, uh, were put off, put off, the town couldn't make a decision what they wanted to do with the building, so it sat there and a little bit decayed and bowled. Finally, they decided to do a lease bid option, uh, which I was included on. We did a walkthrough. There was a, a prospectus, if you will, of the damage and repairs required to make it a public building. Electrical, environmental, mechanical, structural. It was a lot of money. So, the lease option kinda failed. I then offered to Mr. Steinhardt, hey, why don't you offer it to sale to maybe somebody in the local business might pick it up and wanna work on it? He said, that's good. They put it to a, a Select Board vote, and it came out. Again, we did a walkthrough, the, the updates were done for all the repairs that were needed. And I want you to know as the citizens of the town, what that was purchased for. Public knowledge, $12,323, with the expectations that the repairs were going to be done by the new owner, not by the town. That's why they weren't done in the first place. The town kicked the can for about twenty years on that building. So, I don't understand why this is even a discussion. The owner bought it caveat emptor. Anybody understands Latin remembers it, buyer beware. Well aware of what needed to be done in that building, the reason I backed out of it was because of the severity of the repairs to make it public access with the handicap, electrical, there was asbestos in the building, and those lead glass windows were part of it. I wish I could restore them myself, but the person that owns the building should be responsible for that, not the town. Thank you.
Deb Patron, 11 Patriots Way. Uh, thank you, Bill, that's almost exactly what I was gonna say. The town owner owns that building. It is not a public building. Therefore, do not feel that pu- public funds should be used to restore that building. The person that bought it only paid $12,000 for the building. I'm sure they could come up with the money to help restore the windows. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or discussion?
Dominique Anuni, 42 Lakeview Street. I have a couple questions. The committees that are, uh, asking for this money, um, have we ever, those committees ever given money to other private buildings that residents won't have access to?
And, and that, bring the-
Hi, Chris Pratt, 152 Berkshire Avenue. I'm Chair of the, uh, Community Preservation Committee. Um, yes, there have been, money is given to private citizens for purchase of their, um, building rights on their farmland for APRs, things like that, that people do not have public access to. So, under the Act, this is allowable, and that's why it's here. It's up for you to decide whether you want it to go forward or not.
Thank you. One more, if that's okay. If the pri- if the private owner were to sell, sell this prop, the town recoup its investment from that sale?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Based on the question.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion? Seeing there's none, we'll call, oh, I'm sorry.
Um, Pat McMahon, 30, Lauren Lane. Uh, my only question is, I thought the windows were discussed when the building was sold, and there was actually a stipulation that the owner was responsible for restoring and maintaining those windows, and that that was part of the sale. Is that incorrect on my part?
Could, wonder if you bring a microphone back to Mr. Pratt? If he can't answer it, if not, we can have Mr. Mowgli? Our town council?
Um, there is no prohibition for the owner of the property to seek CPA funds for any of the renovations under, um, the historic preservation through the town.
Pat McMahon, 30, Lauren Lane, that wasn't my question. My question is, when the property was transferred from the town to the current owner, was there a stipulation that the stained glass windows needed to be preserved?
There is a historic preservation restriction on the property that it needs to be maintained by him, and the owner is maintaining it, he's just- through the, through the appropriate channels.
Hi, Dennis Clark, 75 Fred Jackson Road. Unpaid consultant for the Community Preservation Committee. This project was brought to us by one of the selectmen, and Mr. Diddy brought it to us, we thought it was a great project. There was no stipulation on the windows, no, no stipulation that, uh, he couldn't take any CPA money. Yes, is a, it's specifically what these, uh, community preservation funds are for. And people do get to enjoy it, they get to see the building, they get to see these beautiful windows, and, uh, I don't understand, the first gentleman that spoke said how much money that has been put into that. That building would have been demolished if it wasn't for the person who bought the, that property, there was no other bidders on it, the building would have been demolished, and it would have been a parking lot there. So I think it's in our best interest as unpaid consultants for the Community Preservation Committee to vote yea on this question. Thank you.
Bill List, 80 Claus Anderson. All due respect, Dennis, it was well-known what was needed in that building. It was a private sale that was accepted and a title transferred as requirement. Question to the town, is that in the historical society, that building? Is it registered with the Historical Society in the town?
Yes.
It wasn't when it would come up for this debate back four years ago. Commission, right. So they can put an input, but they're not demanded to keep it up. They lost that when they didn't have their hands on it. It was a commission recommendation, if it was a historical building, would have to be maintained, correct?
The Historical Commission was party to the entire RFP as far as the, the creation of the preservation restriction documents that went with this sale.
Agreed, and they're online, I read thirty-five pages of them.
Correct.
And there is no provision that says that the town needs to pay for these windows, or any other repairs.
They, you have an applicant, uh, just to be clear, there is an applicant to the CPC-
Right.
-under the Historical Preservation Section of the Community Preservation Act. That board heard an application and forwarded a warrant article to this town meeting, and that's what we're deciding.
Thank you.
Any other final discussion or questions? Okay, we're gonna take a vote. All in favor of this article, say aye. All opposed, say nay. We're gonna go to a count, card vote. So with your cards, the blue, the- I'm gonna ask the tellers, Jason St. Jacques, David Pierce, and Michael McMahon to stand. I'm gonna ask you to raise your blue card if you're in favor of this article, and they're gonna come around and count. Please leave your hands raised. It ended up in a tie, that means that the article does not pass. We're moving on to Article 17, the Community Preservation Old Fire Station. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $5,000 from the Community Preservation Historical Fund to the Sound of, Town of Southwick, towards the assessment to determine the future course of action to preserve and store the flate roof and cupola on the old fire station, currently the police station, located on 11 Depot Street, Map 088, Parcel 001, recorded at the Handen County Registry of Deeds Book 2283, Page 0461, or take any other action relative thereto. This is requested by the Community Preservation Committee, Select Board, and Historical Committee. May I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Article 17. Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $5,000 in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee. Committee.
Do we have any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The article passes. Article 18, alum treatment debt service, see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $75,592 from the Community Preservation General Unreserved Fund for the purpose of making the second interest payment, principal payment on the $600,000 bond issued for the alum treatment of Congamon Lake. This is requested by the Community Preservation Committee and the Select Board. May I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Article 18, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $75,592 from Community Preservation General Unreserved Fund for the purpose of making the second interest and principal payment on the $600,000 bond issued for the alum treatment of the Congamon Lake in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee and Select Board.
Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. The article passes. We're going to move on to the Regional School District Budget, Article 19. Can someone please bring a microphone to Jen Willard? To see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $11,482,631 to the Southwick, Tolland, and Grandville Regional School District Assessment for the fiscal year 2022, commencing July 1st, 2021, and ending on June 30th, 2022, or take any other action relative thereto. This is requested by the Southwick, Tolland, Grandville Regional School District. Do we have, would you like to make a comment, Jen?
Sure, I would first just like to thank the community for all their support during this school year. I'd also like to thank the Select Board for their generous donation of their CVRA funds towards additional PPE and COVID-19-related expenses. This year, we did bring forward a budget with a zero discretionary line item, and we also used a sub portion of our ESR II grant funds to eliminate the increase to Southwick's required local contribution.
Does anyone have questions directed towards the Southwick, Grandville, Tolland Regional School Budget?
Deb Patrion, 11 Patriots Way. Thank you, Jen, for all you've done for the school community this year. I certainly appreciate it. I have two questions. The first is, what has happened to the debt that we acquired renovating all the schools several years ago? Is that finished, or what's happening with that? And the second question is, I see you're putting heating in the foyer here at the high school. Has any thought been given to air conditioning on the second floor of Powder Mill?
Thank you. Deb, the first question was in respect to the debt. Yet we still have numerous years left on the capital debt for the buildings, and it is a separate line item in the budget. It is a non-discretionary assessment for the towns. I will let Steve Presnell, Director of Finance and Operations, talk about the Southwick Regional School vestibule.
So I think, Deb, your question was really around whether or not the district had given thought to air conditioning at Powder Mill School. It's been discussed, but there's been no definitive movement toward planning for that. It's a, it would be a rather significant expense. The number of days out of the entire school year where air conditioning would be required is minimal, so at this point, the school committee has not taken that, taken any action on that.
Do we have any other questions or discussion on the school budget?
80 Claus, Bill List, 80 Claus Anderson. Jen, I don't know if it's true for Steve, but last meeting, we went through the appropriation of the contract for the buses to get moved out, and I wanted to know where that stood. Was that a, you know, a deficit to the town, a benefit? And the dollars and cents weren't given out, so I don't know where we stand with that. Thank you.
Thank you. So this year, we did see a savings in our budget in transportation. As mentioned last year, we, when we brought forward the budget, we did not see any savings in our pension assessments and our group health insurance, and we knew we would realize them this school year. We did see a savings of $290,000 decrease in our pension assessments and in our health insurance. And I'll have Steve Presnell talk to you about the lease of the buses and the sale of some of the buses.
Just following up on Superintendent's comments regarding student transportation, the operational cost increase from FY1 to '22, it's going up by 1.3%, but that's just the direct costs associated. So the indirect costs, the pension savings, and the group health insurance savings are rather significant. So that's worked out for us so far. We also are realizing some revenue to the budget, which helps to reduce the assessments as a result of sale and lease of the vehicles to the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. So it'll be another three years, including this year, where we'll see lease revenue while they're using buses that we currently still have debt service on. So they're owned by the district, being leased to the collaborative. It's a revenue stream. It washes the debt service.
Any other questions on the school budget? We need to get the recommendation of the Finance Committee on the school budget?
Article 19, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $11,482,631 for the Southwick, Tolland, Grandville School District Assessment for the fiscal year 2022.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Article 19 passes. Article 20, Regional School District Debt Authorization, to see if the Town of Southwick will vote to disapprove certain additional debt authorized by the Southwick, Tolland, Grandville Regional School Committee under a vote dated March 30th, 2021, which reads as listed below. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Article 20, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote not to disapprove. Article 20.
Do we have any questions or discussion? All in favor of Article 20, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Article 20 passes. Article 21, Acceptment of Easement, to see if the Town of Southwick will vote to take the following easements shown on a plan entitled, Shady Pines Definitive Subdivision Plan, Southwick, Massachusetts, for Raymond Bruska, Tannery Road, Southwick, Massachusetts, date August 3rd, 1988, DL Bean Incorporated, recorded in the Hampden County Registry of Deeds in Book Plans 264, page 7, by eminent domain pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 79, and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 83, and any other enabling authority of 30-foot drain easement for stormwater drainage across lots 1, 2, 3, shown as 30 feet wide drain easement and perpetual right to drain in favor of the sound of Southwick on said plane, or take any other action relative thereto. This is requested by the Public Works Department and the Select Board. Do we have any comments or discussion? All in favor of Article 21, say aye. All opposed, say no. The article passes. Article 22, Acceptance of Town Way, see if the Town of Southwick will vote to accept as a town way, Revere Road, as shown on the plans entitled, 1, Shady Pines Definitive Subdivision Plan, Southwick, Massachusetts, for Raymond P. Bruska, Tannery Road, Southwick, Massachusetts, date August 3rd, 1988, DL Bean Incorporated, recorded in Hampden County Registry of Deeds in Book of Plans 264, page 7, and 2, Cedar Ridge Estates Plan of Land in the Town of Southwick, Mass., owned by Tannery Road Realty Trust, Jergie White Town and Chapdaleen Civil Engineers Surveyors, December 27th, 1968, recorded in the Hampden County Registry of Deeds in Book of Plans 121, page 50, which plans are in file in the Towns Clerk's office and the Office of the Department of Public Works of the Town of Southwick, and see if the town will further vote to authorize the Board of Select Board to take eminent domain pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 79, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 83, and under any enabling authority on easement in such way to use said way for all purpose for which public ways are used in the Town of Southwick, or take any other action relative thereto. This is requested by the Department of Public Works and the Select Board. Is there any questions on Article 22?
Michael McMahon, 30, Lauren Lane. Articles here, overall, what's occurring?
Randy Brown, 95, Fred Jackson Road, DPW Director. So Articles 21, 22, 23, and 24 are all related to accepting Revere Road as a town road. So what happened was, this road is built by the private developer back in the, I think, 1980s. He basically did 99% of the work to get, but he did not finish. So these articles are the appropriate money necessary to complete that project so we can accept this as a town road. So the first Article 21, that was to accept the drain easement that was laid out with that project. This article is to accept the road as a public way. And the next two articles are the appropriate money that are necessary to set property bounds, record the easements necessary for the drain easement, and to develop an as-built plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion? All in favor of Article 22? Please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Article 22 passes. Article 23, Easement Takings, see if the town will vote to authorize their expenditure of funds by the Select Board to take such easement for stormwater drainage easements relative to stormwater drainage from Revere Road listed in Article 22 of this town warrant related to Revere Road by eminent domain, including but not limited to completing any appaisals required under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 79. Payment of damages to abutters on account of such taking, payment of legal fees, cost of service or mailing, and cost of recording, any takings or plans, and cost of other notices publication required to accomplish such taking and in accepting such easement for the costs and expenses for obtaining a survey setting right away, boundaries and development, drainage easement of Revere Road within the Town of Southwick, including all costs incidental and relative thereto, but not to exceed $20,000, or take any other action relative thereto. This is requested by the Public Works Department and the Select Board. Do we have any comments or discussion? And the recommendation from the Finance Committee, please?
Article 23, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to authorize the expenditure of $20,000 in funds by the Select Board to take such easements for stormwater drainage easements relative to stormwater drainage from Revere Road listed in Article 22 of this town meeting warrant related to reserve Revere Road acceptance as read by the moderator.
Is there any other further discussion? All in favor of Article 23, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Article 23 passes. Article 24, Appropriation for Appraisals for Taking and Costs Associated Therewith, etc., to see if the town will vote to authorize the expenditure of funds by the Select Board to take such easement in Revere Road by eminent domain, including but not limited to compelling any appaisals required under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 79, payment of damages to abutters on account of such taking, payment of legal fees, cost of service or mailings, cost of recordings, taking the plans, and other notices of publications required to accomplish such taking and accepting Revere Road as a public way, not to exceed $25,000, or take any other action relative thereto. The recommendation of the Finance Committee, please?
Article 24, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to authorize the expenditure of $25,000 in funds by the Select Board to take such easements for Revere Road acceptance as read by the moderator.
Do we have any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Article 24 passes. Article 25, Planning Board, Employment of Outside Consultants, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Southwick and add a new chapter 190 entitled, Employment of Outside Consultants By Law, for the employment of outside consultants to be used by the Town of Southwick Planning Board, and further to authorize now substantial changes to the lettering and numbering of the code of Southwick to be consistent with the code of the Town of Southwick. And this is requested by the Planning Board. Do we have any questions or discussion? All in favor of Article 25? All in favor of the motion? I'm sorry. All in favor of Article 25, say aye? All opposed, say nay. Article 26, Planning Board, Grandfather Term, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Sound of Southwick to remove and define term grandfathered from Chapter 185-36.1C, and further to authorize non-substantial changes to the lettering, numbering, and the code of the Town of Southwick to be consistent with the code of Southwick. And this is requested by the Planning Board. Can I have a second? Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. I believe that passes by the majority. Okay, I'm sorry.
Marcus Phelps, 28, Depot Street. I speak in favor of this, but I believe it requires a two-thirds vote, since it's a zoning bylaw.
Yes, Marcus, thank you. You are correct. That does require a two-thirds vote. So go ahead and just redo that, please. All in favor of Article 26, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. We declare that a two-thirds vote. The article passes. Thank you for your understanding and patience. Article 27, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, the signed bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws 185-29 of the code of South, Town of Southwick as follows, further that non-substantiated changes to the numbering and letter of the code of Southwick be authorized to be consistent with the code of the Town of Southwick. We need a motion to take this. Can I have a second? Do we have any discussion regarding the signed bylaw? This also requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That passes by two-thirds. We're moving to Article 28, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Solar Energy, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Town of Southwick, Section 185-23.2, as follows, and further that non-substantiated changes to the numbering and lettered of the code of the Town of Southwick be authorized to be consistent with the Town of Southwick. And you can see the deletions are crossed out, and the additions are underlined. Can I have a motion to bring that to the floor? Do we have any discussion regarding the solar bylaw? Again, this does require a two-thirds vote. All in favor of the changes to the zoning bylaw amendment for solar energy, Article 28, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. That passes by a two-thirds majority. We're moving on to Article 29, Stormwater Bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the code of the Town of Southwick by deleting the existing Chapter 185, Section 38.1, entitled Erosion and Sediment Control for Stormwater Management, and add a new general bylaw, Chapter 183, entitled Stormwater Management Erosion and Sediment Control, to the code of the Town of Southwick as follows, and further that non-substantiated changes to the lettering and number of the code of the Town of Southwick be authorized to be consistent with the code of the Town of Southwick. I'm sorry, it's Section 36.1, entitled Erosion and Sediment Control for the Stormwater Management. Do we have any discussion of the stormwater management and erosion sediment control? All in favor of Article 29, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. The article passes. We're on Article 30, Stormwater Bylaw Changes, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Southwick to amend Chapter 315, Section 24A, storm drainage as follows, and further that non-substantiated changing to the lettering and number of the code of Town of Southwick be authorized to be consistent with the code of the Town of Southwick. Again, deletions are striked out, and additions are underlined. Do we have any, let me just mention, this is requested by the Paneling Board and the Public Works Department. Do we have any discussion for the stormwater bylaw changes? All in favor of the stormwater bylaw changes, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Article 30 passes. Article 31, The Stretch Energy Code, to see if the town will vote to enact Chapter 186 of the code of the Town of Southwick general bylaws entitled Stretch Energy Code for the Purpose of Regulating the Design and Construction for the Effective Use of Energy pursuant to Appendix 115AA of the Massachusetts Building Code, 780CMR, to the Stretch Energy Code, including future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto, with an effective date of January 1, 2022, a motion of which is on file with the town clerk, and further that non-substantive changes to lettering and number of the code of the Town of Southwick be authorized to be consistent with the code of the town, or take any other action relative thereto. This is requested by the Select Board. Do we have any discussion about the Stretch Energy Code? All in favor of the Stretch Energy Code, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Article 32, Civil Fingerprinting, to see if the town will enact Chapter 63 of the code of the Town of Southwick general bylaws entitled Single Fingerprinting Bylaw as Followed, and further that non-substantiated changing to the letter and number of the code of Southwick be authorized to be consistent with the code of the Town of Southwick. Do we have any questions about civil fingerprinting? All in favor of civil fingerprinting, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Civil fingerprinting passes. That is actually the conclusion of the annual town meeting. Thank you very much, and thank you for pointing out my errors and I-
We make a motion to adjourn.
We make a motion to adjourn, see? I have a second. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Thank you very much.
And as is customary, we have some certificates of appreciation for some board members and committee members that are leaving service to the Town of Southwick. And I'd like to take this opportunity. I'll get to that there, sir. I'd like to recognize those people now. If you could come up and grab your certificate, if you're here. Well, we still got to go through them all, right? Alan Schlesler, Town Planner. Dr. Jerry Asia from the Board of Health. Chelsea D. Berry from the School Board. Michael Mazzarelli from Park and Rec. Veronica Connolly from the Cemetery Commission. And Paul Connolly from the Board of Assessors. Thank you all for your service to the town. I'd also like to thank those that, who helped set up, Peter Cowles, Dennis Clark, Police Department, Fire Department, Charlie Dunlap and SEMA, and Madam Moderator, uh, sorry? And the maintenance crew from the town who set all this stuff up. Thank you to the schools. Madam Moderator, it's a record, we have all these lights set up. We were figuring we're going to go till 10 o'clock. So, thank you very much. Have a great evening, everyone.